Thank you, Ben.
My pleasure.
Sure.
See you later. Thanks, thanks everybody for coming. We've been having these meetings. I think we've been eye opening at times.
I think they've been very.
I think they've been very informative. I'm glad we've had them. We kind of start off on a couple of meetings. I've asked, you know, how much, what's the asks and how much do we have? What I've told asks is three and a half million or something?
Uh, so when we started the entire process, the ask were three point seven million and we as the common three point seven million for the general fund.
Yep.
And we, the county can only raise it by one point eight million due to the maximum growth quota. So we have. And three hundred thousand already used, so we're down to one point five. So we've been slowly dwindling the way to get the the much into the bag that we can get into.
Yeah, so that's why I say that at every meeting, so. Kind of everybody understands the situation here. We actually, our very first meeting was, it was kind of great. The guy from Opportunity Enterprise, God bless his heart, he's sitting there the whole meeting. I think he was gonna, you know, ask him, he got up and was, uh, yep, no.
We're good.
I think Karen was, what did you want to talk about? He was, yeah, after listening to this, no, I think I'm good right where I'm at. I'm not asking anything this year, so.
I don't want to give it back.
Yeah, so yeah, that's about where I think he was at, you know, um.
I feel the same way.
I'm like, hey, this is, these are the numbers we have to work with, um, you know, um, this, what is it, right? You are best, I guess.
How many more do we have after today?
Um, he had requested that the health department come down and I've got them set up for next Thursday.
Great. Did, was there any, did you hear this, they're like, okay, so that O P A, or if the health department um, was gonna help out the juvenile detention service.
Anything, I think that's some of the topics that we're talking about.
I know they're gonna ask the board and hopefully they do, because I think that, that's why I want to ask the health department, ask them, say, hey, you got this money, let's.
We did request that, they asked the board.
Yeah, yeah. I think that'd be great.
Well, we saved the best for the last.
Save the challenge of.
Challenge.
Department has a lot, a lot of money because they get grants and state money they come in, and we'd like them to assist in some of the nursing areas and that mental health areas.
Especially in the J D C, I mean, there are kids, they, there are, because I asked them, how many kids are ours? All of them, I'm like, okay, well, that seems like that could be mine, that could be used for our kids' mental health. You know, so I think it's only right that, I mean, that a lot of money for their needs.
We're gonna start with prosecutor's office, because he has a lot of, now, now that it's bad that you got so much. So, um, the first budget would be the general fund, and he's asking for two additional prosecutors. That means it's gone up by a hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen. Did you want to?
Well, I think it's pretty well known that our office is short of seven or eight lawyers. And if you expect us to keep pace with the number of cases that we have and the rise in the serious cases, we need, um, skilled prosecutors at the upper level of the law. Um, as you'll see, um, that, that sheriff and everyone else will say, well, our cases are rising not only by numbers, but by the seriousness. What used to be a class A misdemeanor is now a felony because everybody. Um, I'm pretty sure that, um, we really need help with our upper level felonies, because what murder case years ago would take three days, murder case now takes two days. It requires basically two lawyers, and two lawyers out of law school are not gonna make it. Uh, so, um, the two lawyers I've asked for are the lawyers at the upper level, uh, paid, uh, levels. I know there are lawyers who are in private practice, who would rather work in prosecutors, not who have twenty years' experience, uh, and, um, would come to work for us if the position were to be. Uh, so that's the reason for the request, I would say, and that, um, for five years, five years now, as I look forward, going forward, five years in the future, and, um, looking now, five years in the future or ten years. If you look around us, you can see what happens to criminal justice systems when that system falls behind. Chicago, Lake County, and so if we're gonna maintain, if we're not gonna be like Lake County, then we need to support Sheriff's Department, law enforcement, and for sure the prosecutor's office, because we are the hub of the media.
Okay, I see that the, um, law books went up by three thousand dollars. If you don't use the online, you get, what, what do you do?
Yeah, so we get, um, little code books that we pass out there, every law enforcement officer.
Although those are copies.
Yes, our copy seem a little hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we get those, uh, those seem to be very helpful. We supply them to all the courts, all of the, um, stuff, so every officer in forty five gets that. And if we carry them around, they're part of the, in fact, in fact, the year of. Some of our other books that we do use are some of the evidence books we order like every other year, and those are somewhat.
So are we increasing the amount of the small code books or they gone up in price?
They have gone up just a little bit in price and also the number.
Okay.
Has increased.
So this land, you're supplying all officers and everybody?
Yes.
The next one is maintenance, one of like seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's our copy of, that's the copy of product. Now, I don't know that we're gonna use all that, because we do have a new copier contract, but we don't, we don't get the copier, we, like, go through the commissioners. So they had a contract where every other copy was being charged, so a single blue dot on a piece of paper was a colored copy. And so we ended up paying all the overage, because we're playing by the contract. We now are taking our color photographs, uh, from homicide scenes, for example, the staples, because we're paying for the copier. Uh, but that's what, that was the cost last year.
That, that is.
Yeah, listen, I mean.
That's almost absurd.
That's almost absurd. I, I, I agree.
You know, we've, we've been trying to work on it, like, we didn't find out about it until it was like too late.
Here, you, you see their, first student, I think, law.
Uh, it's through the commissioners, I think they buy it.
It's new, as I think they're buying.
They're new when they're buying, but they used to have lease with, um, if you went over a certain amount, they had to pay them a degree.
You're exactly right.
So you had like maybe five thousand copies, and if you went over five thousand.
Oh, yeah, that's enough. So that's what's happening. And like I said, I don't know that we're gonna use all that money, because we do have a new copier contract. And we, we are, uh, we just took a bunch of photographs to stay.
Questions?
And then we take our, out of our virtual version.
How is that a copier that you just got?
Yes.
And the contract is good for how long? Five years?
I'm not sure. It was for two years. I don't want to.
But usually those kind of the, yeah, we will check before you.
So Karen, I got a question for you, since I've started, and I'm trying to absorb all of this, because I, I see the commissioners provide some people copiers, I T provides?
Well, what happens to I T, um, goes out and quotes it, the commissioners take it out of C C D.
C C D.
So it helps the I T, that's go.
Every copier supposedly.
Not all, it all depends. If you have, if you have a non-general fund, you handle it yourself.
We were trying to get them in my car, so I didn't know if this.
Right, we were trying to get some continuity between.
We have most of them with a leasing company, or buying them or having somebody servicing them.
Any other questions, Karen, on this budget? Okay, you've got the prosecutor local forfeiture twelve thirty four, and it looks like you've got twenty thousand, that's the same in office fix, office supplies, and twenty thousand in legal, and the total, total is forty thousand, it's the same as previous year, so no change.
I don't know that we made any change in our line items. Uh, we, we, our forfeiture fund really is our thirty four, is our savings fund, if that's just in case of emergency or something, or if we're taxing the rest of our, our funds.
And then you've got the federal forfeiture fund, and you've got the same amount of forty thousand, no change in that either, that's number twelve thirty five.
There's.
Okay, now we've got the prosecutor deferral, and we've got.
Which number is that?
Uh, twenty five oh one.
Okay.
And, um, you're looking at increases in salaries. Um, we have approximately six thousand four hundred for your court manager five, and we've got about, uh, four thousand or five thousand for court manager seven, and reception is about five thousand five hundred, probably something like.
One of those positions has been announced, uh, because we can't afford, uh, the, and that's the fund that's really stressed. Uh, sorry, fresh, should be fresh in the furl twenty five oh one.
Uh huh.
Yeah, um, so we pay three employees out of that, that includes all of the benefits, of course.
Except for medical, you don't get medical.
No, we don't. And then we have, uh, four victim advocates, I think, um, are being paid. Some of their benefits are being paid out of that fund as well, so we, we just haven't been able to afford it. Uh, and I've always said to counsel, I don't know that we should be paying employees out of funds that we generate from infraction to furl or pre-trial depression, because we're negotiating cases for money to pay ourselves. But that's, that's, there are three people there at that fund. Like I said, one of them is there.
I think it wasn't possible, state board accounts might tag us right now, because you've been paying the fitness account for a long period of time. I think we've been paying, we got the girl, individuals coming on the furl program.
I know, yes. No, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with the state board of council, or how you guys do things. I'm saying it's, uh, potentially a kind of a cold stuff, yeah, it's a kind of like a dangerous protection.
Won't be cutting anybody any breaks anytime soon, sure.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the idea.
No, I mean, really, yeah.
I mean, so.
Right, no, I, I, I get it.
We have, uh.
Now, we did do better last month. Our infraction to furl fees were twenty thousand dollars last month, that's the most this year.
So I, Karen, a question here for this, I was just thinking about this, infraction to furl, does that mean when somebody does something, you bring on the furl program? And.
Uh, it's an infraction, like speeding, running downtown, yeah, not, not a criminal case.
Not, it's not a criminal case.
Yes, so they can defer the case for a year, uh, at the end of the year, we dismiss.
They have two different, they have the infraction to furl and they've got pre-trial to.
That's what I was thinking, with pre-trial referrals.
And we pay some of the salary of one person out of, in pre-trial version, that's our domestic violence budget.
So this is, last year it was three forty three, four seventy eight. Um, that was primarily because they did include some of their medical life insurance last year at fifty eight thousand, six hundred three, but this year they're not, so it's gone down to three oh two, two point six.
Which one are you on, actually?
This would be great.
So, okay, turn on, I was gonna say, I'm not seeing the numbers you're talking about. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to build that one up like that.
But you are paying from, uh.
Pay two.
They pay five thousand, they pay first, maybe don't do.
Which means it falls back, I know it falls back on the.
I thought their insurance benefits were coming out of this fund, I think we had.
Last year you did, not this year, you put zero, yeah.
Okay, I don't know, this one, no, I, I believe you, I just thought.
You didn't have put zero, I put zero.
Yeah, why did, well, why didn't you do?
This was instead of, so we were talking about moving one of the prosecutor's people over, and instead of moving the person over, we moved the benefits over.
Oh, okay, well, that'll help significantly.
Move it over, switch.
The, it's a general fund.
Move it over the general fund? Yeah, that's not enough.
No.
That's my server one, so.
Well, there are certain funds, again, I mean, we can ask them to cut in other places in the fund, but it's the benefits. Again, that's been one of the issues in the grant funds and some of the other fine funds is while some departments do want the people in them, it's the benefits and everything that they either don't take into account or put a significant strain on some of those. So either we can take the person out and move them back, or we move the benefits over. Either one is gonna be, you know, a hit to the general fund, but again, it keeps this fund also alive for the long term.
So, but in all actuality, if it does not have any increases in the salaries, he'd be able to cover those, that. Some of them.
Well.
Because that's right now, we've talked about.
Regenerate, because that fund has, um, has really dropped in the amount of deferrals, uh, that people are, are, um, enrolling in the program.
Where do you think, where do you think that is?
Well, I think one, uh, these officers do not have enough time now to work traffic, they have so many other calls, because I've asked Sheriff's Department, Portage, uh, about, well, and the N S A police, it's a little different, because they work the toll. For, that's where most of these deferrals, but we don't have the same number of infractions that we had four years ago.
So take a.
They're going down, they're going down, but they just don't have the time.
Well, the state plays really good C D Ls, and they have, they're not allowed to get.
But, um, what happens on the interstate, they're ready to take somebody from Montana, and they come back here, so they sign up for the furl program.
But they're C D.
Yeah, the state.
Okay.
Now, the C D Ls do not qualify.
I S P was on forty nine, around that bend, and I looked, I went, boom. He didn't, uh.
I think on present.
Yeah, he was on his door looking like this, I'm.
Three hats and a cap. Okay.
I never see I S.
Do you have questions on that?
Well, it's just, uh, we could talk about a budget, and I'm, I don't know. We aren't facing the real crunch with our, uh, health insurance, we have these. A lot of departments are paying it, and then there's some that aren't, and, um.
Like, we have to take our interest this time and pay four point three.
And, and to be honest with you, Karen, that was one of the things.
We had to save.
That was one of the things last year Jeremy and I talked about, so Jeremy's kind of God sent, and we're getting five, oh, close to five percent now, because we're getting, you know, a couple of years ago, we were getting maybe serious two hundred thousand, now we're getting in the millions, and so like, okay, now we have some, you know, some things we can, we can do with it, but then.
But if we're paying the insurance.
I, I know, that's why we didn't, there you go, this year was a kick in the teeth, it would be four and a half million now, four point three or four point five, so that kind of burned that.
Right.
Part of money out, um.
When I go back, I'll have, um, my assistant pull up the money off the scene.
Where is it at?
Uh, twenty five oh one, just to see what was, what was being taken out, because I didn't do the math about what we can or cannot support. We also have line items in there for some of our trial expenses as well. Uh, that fund got messed up about five years ago, unless they do recover. Too much money was being taken out, we're trying to use some of the money for matching, and it's just allowed. So there's a big loss of like sixty thousand dollars, which was taken out in like January, February of two thousand and nineteen.
Was this the one where we tried to take out the insurance, and that was making a deal?
Yeah, yeah, we've been living on edge, so I'm just.
Any other questions on twenty five oh one? That's the, uh, infraction to furl program. Next one is twenty five oh three, which is a pre-trial. He did, um, increase the salaries approximately of four hundred. It went from nineteen two five three to twenty six ninety seven. He is covering his medical life benefits. Um, he needed to increase office supplies. Um, returning fugitives, that's always expensive, there's some increase there. Office equipment increase, the total, um, was fifteen thousand dollars increase approximately from last year in the one thirty five three one eight.
There's one person being paid now, uh.
Right, is that a half a person?
Um, if that's, uh, yeah, it's the most of violence prosecuted, so that's that grant, and then we've softened that. And that, that fund is healthy. Uh, if we have a major trial, most of our trial expenses are gonna come out of that fund.
Questions on twenty five oh three? What is the, uh, the amount of, uh, increase you're asking for wage?
Karen just said.
That's like about four hundred.
Four hundred dollars or?
Well, that's one thousand four hundred dollars approximately. It went from nineteen two five three to twenty six ninety seven, with approximately fourteen hundred dollars.
When the prosecutor turned in all of his budgets, he turned them in with a raise across the board for all of his funds. Just so you know.
Were they the same, or is it?
Yeah, no, that's why he, uh, he, he, they did their own internal breakdowns and made sure.
Colored.
Uh, yes, and I used the wage study from two thousand and two.
So that was just midpoint, then?
It was, we never, yeah, sort of midpoint, but then I took the, uh, a little bit.
We did midpoint and colon.
Yes, uh, going back, because we never got to the, to the midpoint, when we first did it, so I'm catching, and this is catching up in two thousand and twenty.
You never got midpoint when we did.
Not in this, now, it's starting at the midpoint, but it didn't take into account the cost of it.
Yeah, most of the points didn't take into account, colon, cost of everything.
I don't think we're doing cost of it.
No.
I'm, I'm, I'm just letting them know, if you were looking at this budget, that's why you will see a raise from each one.
Right.
So this is sheriff did something, of the same.
Yeah.
So, this sheriff did something across the board in all of their budgets as well, so we will see that in here as well. Again, we did not send out the letter to everyone, so this, this discussion, so you will see across all of their budgets that there's an increase.
I guess the difference, the differentiation between where we are with these wage studies minus the.
Everyone's been, everyone's been brought to midpoint, it's all way, at this point, it's total, okay.
Any other questions on twenty five oh three, pre-trial? Okay, the P C A grant, eighty, eight, ninety one. That's the same amount as last year, all the numbers are the same, with the no moving of any type of funds, total in this budget's ten thousand. Okay? Questions? Okay, prosecutor victim assistance eighty one twelve. We have, uh, one, two, four, and five victim advocates, total of two thirty two, five sixty four. The previous year was two sixteen, three forty, which is an increase of sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty four dollars for salaries. Went from fifty four thousand eighty five to fifty eight thousand one forty one. And that's the only item in there, there are no other expenditures.
That's silly question, vic, add victim advocate three, is he somewhere else, or she?
Yes, he's general fund.
In the general fund, that's how it's booked, so.
Uh, go over from grant, one is from general.
So there's a victim, oh, okay, victim that, three right there.
Yes.
I'm just curious. Yep, got it.
Any questions on that one? Next one is prosecutor staff grant eighty one thirteen, uh, the salary was sixty seven eight oh six, requested an increase to seven two, two thousand eight hundred ninety one. That's the only item in that budget.
That's an increase of what?
Oh, I'm doing my head about five thousand and eighty five dollars.
It's good.
Close?
Yeah.
Any questions on that one? Any questions? Okay, forty. Uh, the general fund, uh, the current year is six oh seven zero zero eight, they're keeping it the same in six oh seven zero zero eight. Um, the question is, you did name three sad home?
That is Laura Stafford, so if the numbers are what they are, I will answer no.
Okay.
Conditionally, if I'm, whatever she likes that.
Would you tell her that we're able to come to your budget today?
No.
Oh, yeah, I'm not wrong.
I don't want to roll a deal with.
But I'll tell her now.
Yeah, you're gonna be in trouble.
You've been trouble.
Yeah.
I know.
Anyway, the total, as you know, forty million comes from things, um, and we got, they're asking for the same exact amount they outscored in twenty twenty four, for a total of six eighteen two oh eight. Keep in mind, this is Laura's budget, we might see her later. This is the four D general fund.
So silly question, but Laura does.
She's a prosecutor for forty.
Prosecutor. She's, uh, office manager for our child support. Okay.
She's in our dog, or?
Yes, she is.
Yes. She worked on your. Had a root during. Um, any questions on the four D general fund? Okay, we have county four B incentive eighty eight ninety five. The salaries, um, are the same, this is another one that Laura works with, so the total amount on the bottom is the same, there's no change in this budget.
This is state too?
This is, it depends on, depending on the amount that you collect. And then we have the faster forty incentive eighty eight ninety seven. And the amount has gone down fourteen thousand dollars. It looks like. Her maintenance fee has went from fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred. We're gonna, we didn't have a shelf now.
She'd be carrying a printer, that's what it is.
Maintenance, a maintenance would be the copier, but something has happened that.
It sounds like a cycle there.
Number of funds I can.
Uh, pardon?
The number of.
Eighty eight ninety seven, and it would be line eight of thirty six time? You can always contact us after this slide.
Yeah.
It doesn't come leaving out.
No.
That's your last one.
Are you lucky or what?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's it, any else?
Do you have any other questions for prosecutor Herman, any for us?
Yeah, all these, I would know this, Laura, but what's a bonus, bonus incentive of fifty dollars?
Uh, if our child support division collects so much money, they will get a bonus money from the state of Indiana.
Oh, great.
And, um, staff at some point during the year will receive like five hundred fees or a thousand fees or something like that.
Oh, good.
And they always do.
Want to say, uh, the average that we get back from the four D incentive to our cops allocation plans, what about quarter million? Through Jeff Dossick?
Oh, that I don't know.
That's, yeah, that's a little different.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a little.
You know, they're collecting between two and three million dollars in your child support. Uh, which for, look at the side of our account, it gives them a heavy.
I don't like that model, based on performance, so a trial where loses the case, do you still get paid?
Yes, I do.
I'm just saying, not that anybody's lost a case, I'm just saying, they win the case, bring you on the rate, I don't know.
Take money right back from.
I like it.
Better investigation.
Well, that's all I had, anything? Anything else from anybody?
Give me the river here. Any questions? Take my twenty dollars out of the mail. Put it in my free bill, I'm gonna back to work. Hi, good to see you guys, thank you.
You did nothing other than raw.
The very first thing we're looking at is the fill up, I did not. Well, he knows it already, it's already. You memorized it.
Sure.
Sure. Yes.
I just didn't have the option to copy every one of his budgets because a lot of them are funny funds. And three pages with nothing in them, and I didn't think it was to be a thing of the county yet, nor is it the county. So this report here breaks down all of the different budgets, okay? Um, what we're gonna do is probably go through the general fund first for the sheriff's department. And then we'll, um, talk about the other. Also, I have a report for everyone about the vehicles and, um. It will show how many vehicles for the sheriff's department highway. For everyone, so you have everything in front of you that you need.
Me too.
You're familiar with them. You're my director of finance.
Sure, where we go here?
Do we get, happy salsa? You've sent it to me, my dear.
It's what I sent you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, just the cash letters.
Yeah. So what'll happen is, is Ryan's gonna tell you what the number, it's right here, it tells you which fund it is. And then he will tell you the amount, and then Kathy and the sheriff can tell you what it can be used for and what they use it for.
Okay.
I have all these ordinances memorized.
I'm looking at eleven oh one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, excellent fund, you are correct.
The funny funds, so. You see there on the bottom, the cash amount that they have in there as of today is eighty six, three, five, three, fifty two.
Or did you need to have me?
And then you guys can explain you, cause that, you know, what comes out of the actual accident fund.
So that accident fund money is generated from just that, all of the accident records through Lexis, Lexis. We get that, we charge people to get their accident report, I believe it's twenty dollars, is that correct? And then, or Lexis, Nexis charges twenty dollars, we get twelve of those dollars back. That's what builds up this fund. This fund has limited uses that are supposed to be for accidentally construction, crime scene investigation, things like that. So we have used the fund, we purchased a, a vehicle a couple of years ago. And that kind of in the trap of that fund is to let it build up so that then we can take some burden off of the general fund. In years to come, when we outfit a new vehicle, which is originally fifty dollars nowadays. Uh, we use it for pricing supplies, expense by, uh, we just bought new chief, we bought new cones and. Barricades and stuff, I believe.
Construction, there are barricades, cones, and trailer for it.
The trailer did, we bought a trailer for all of those, all of that equipment.
They call them county highway, way to power, nothing. Wait for it, we just set it up ourselves.
So you say. Four years ago, first some vehicles came out there.
I believe it.
They're not doing that now, are they?
No, we, because we have to build the fund back up, which is where we're at now, we're at eighty six, we could purchase a vehicle out of there for. Twenty twenty five, that's kind of in the track record of that fund.
Okay.
We'll spend it, wait a couple of years, build it back up, spend it.
Budget was this year or next year? Going to be spending here?
For that account?
So, software and. Using subscription.
With the feral, we're gonna get a new three D scanner, that's a accident reconstruction scanner. That's Gary. That purchased that originally for us, for county council.
We have an actual budget or we have the budget?
Are you thinking a budget?
Yeah.
We're not.
So, just letting everyone know what.
Thank you, that helps.
But, no, um, yeah.
And quite truthfully, these are preliminary, you know? And we'll have all this again in front of the full council, so, you know, it's no, no big deal.
Yeah. More just for discussion.
Okay.
Knowing where everything's at, but they're using it. Uh, the next fund. Well, so some of these are jails, some of these are.
Right.
Sheriff. Um, the next one on your guys' sheet that you see one, one, two, two is a jail fund. This is county corrections.
That money can only be used for, that is, the money that comes directly from the Department of Corrections. And so we buy all of mattresses. jumpsuits, whatever. Yeah, shoes, shampoo, everything for, for jails.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next time, you'll have to. Go ahead.
I received the Indiana Department of Corrections. Received a hundred and five and over here, it's a hundred and thirty seven. Always what your balance is.
Correct. At that time, it was a hundred and thirty seven.
Okay, I'm trying to do.
Yep.
I don't think they've ever seen these reports before, and unfortunately, they have, I'm trying to give you guys as much as I can. And unfortunately, they're unaware of where this money is coming from once in a while, or what it can be used for, and that's why sometimes it gets a little confusing. And that's why I thought, now that we have this open area, we can talk to them so that they understand more where the money's coming from and the fact that has limitations on where and when it can be used.
Where is the Bob Parker?
Bob Parker, that's where we buy our, our soap and shampoo and.
I mean, unusual name.
Yeah, well, you wanna come on down? Captain Taylor has been working with the state health department. There is a new program that they have to buy supplies for inmates. Through a, a state, like a co-op site, yeah, like a co-op, exactly. So he's still in the process of setting it up, but that should bring some substantial savings to the county. We also have general fund money that we use to purchase things for inmate. Because this is obviously not enough, but, um, that should certainly help us.
Well, this is, it's entertaining.
But, you know, it's like.
Right.
Some, some people have worked through this, and the problem is when you don't know where the money's coming from, and you're thinking, okay, so we've got a building. Got all these people, but who pays for this? How do we get this? You know, we understand the food thing, but we don't always know where the soap comes from, where the, the other items.
On page four, you'll see county expedition. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, not, not much in there.
Page five, firearm training.
Eleven fifteen.
Yeah, so we used to charge people for gun permits, and that's where the money was generated from in twenty. Twenty one. That was, that was stopped, and now. Yeah, but I don't believe it even.
Oh, yeah, it's constitutional carry, you don't need to, you don't need to apply.
So, there's a brand.
You don't need to, you could just have a gun and you don't have any, any type of permits or anything.
Yes, yes and no, yes, you, you, you can carry without a permit, but the restrictions on who can carry still stand. Right?
So wait then, but I'm, I have that right.
Not unless, not if you're a domestic batter. Or a convicted felon, right?
Thanks for that chip.
So whatever, by the state doing away with the permit. By the state doing away with the permit, it hasn't, it hasn't taken away the rules on who can carry. But now the burden is shifted on the state to show that you can't carry. Right, so if I come across you and you have a gun, it's up to me to determine whether you're a convicted felon, whether you're a domestic batter. Um, where now it's not the burden on the, on the citizens, it's the burden on the state.
When they.
Now, they will still, like, you can't just go like, yeah, you can't go to Bass Pro and be a convicted felon or.
But I used to travel, I didn't have a gun.
Yeah, as you should. Yeah, I think every, if you can have a gun, you should have. That's my.
Or more.
Or more.
But that has different to your.
Well, we, we are still bringing money into that fund, we got a break.
Yes.
There's a program that, um, the chief and.
They took the average of three years, I think, and then what they did was, we get the average every year, so they wasn't into the state like it.
They, they offset it.
So they didn't have to go cold turkey.
Right.
It could end up, they don't put in the average every year.
Right. So, and we have used that money to update firearm for the department, to do some different things, our, our firearms guys now don't have to come back to the department to get. Supplies and put them in their truck and go back, we have a firearms trailer so that we have guns aren't in there.
Yeah.
It's just supplies, um, and things for the range.
Sometimes the supplies are tough to get, so.
Well, I don't know if there's ammo. So, uh, that is what that fund has been being used for, is to update. The items at the range that the guys use and their actual gun also. And next year, we did include in the budget that we're going to update our price.
Page six. On one one seven four medical inmates. Uh, this is what, one of. Three or four medical inmate kind of line items that you guys.
Yeah.
Have at places.
Right, so the money that goes in here is, is very minimal, and that is generated when an inmate asks for. Kind of all, or. That's to be a nurse or something like that, they're very minimal charges. They, I believe that the, the medicine itself is covered.
Medicine that they get are.
Right.
Prescribed.
Right.
So it has to be prescribed medicine.
Correct.
Not over the counter.
When they offer, I have a headache fifty two times. It's things like that, that's why it's so minimal, because everyone still gets their care. This is just the few things that are charged back to them. It's not enough.
I, definitely, I feel that. Anybody that's not from Porter County, it's what they're getting a bill.
Um, page seven, the sex violon offender. Fund.
That is exactly what it is, they get charged a fee every month.
Um, you know, they have a register once a year, and then they have to file for any changes in cars, homes, work. And there's, each, they have a.
And what's the I R L's extended to for?
Oh, sorry.
Fifty dollars.
Overtime that came out of that fund. We pay our own.
Who can you spend this by?
Um, any, it has to be sex offender regular, so we do sex offender check. And then that overtime, we pull out specifically, it comes out of this fund. And a couple of years ago, we bought a new vehicle for the guy that does the sex offender. Yeah, check out, yeah, and so that was paid for out of this fund, same kind of thing, like the accident fund, we build it up. We'll purchase something big or use something big and then wait a couple of years, build it back up. I mean, I believe two years ago is when we bought Larry's truck and this fund was down to like two thousand dollars. So, we're, we're trying to utilize it to pay someone a burden.
Page A, sheriff pension fund.
On that note.
We need bills here.
Let's see that.
So this is just money from the process servers and the clerk's office that goes into this fund. We bring it in every month, we put it out every month towards the pension, we use that money that's generated by the paper servers. Every month before we go after the general.
You see an increase on this with new pension, wanting to help.
Well.
It can affect this fund because this only brings in what it, what it brings in.
So is this on top of like, I think next year they're talking about a couple hundred thousand, three hundred thousand or something?
One seventy nine.
I'm sorry, it was one seventy nine, I mean, this was last year, a pretty big number, but, so one seventy nine, so this all goes to pension.
Correct.
Plus the one seventy nine.
Plus the nine hundred thousand that's in the general fund and the hundred and seventy that's in the federal prison or president.
Well, I want to know, this, I want to get an understanding of what, where everything comes from.
Yes, so we take this money first.
This is first?
Yeah. Every single month, we complete this. Then for the balance of that month payment, we go for the general fund. We have money to come out of the school resource officer fund. That I don't do until later in the year usually, because I'm waiting for money to come in from the school.
Let me, you say this is a paper.
No, you're good.
Papers are all much.
Ten actually would be able to.
Where, where's the money come, we're getting two hundred and seventeen, which is great, I wish we give three hundred and seventeen.
That's all papers, so we have two full-time paper servers and two part-time paper servers, everything to deal with, uh, eviction.
Oh, that means.
Now, Mary actually worked in civil bureau for ten years, so, um, some of it comes from the clerk's office, but some of it comes from the sheriff's department. Do you know the difference, the breakdown?
No, I'm just thinking because Margaret was the one who paid paper service, I didn't. Um, I want to say there was a set fee with every document that was sent through that had a, a processor. The hard part with that is, is they pay that one fee for the court docket. And you could have five. For the court docket and you could have five defendants on it and they may have to serve five papers for that twenty eight dollars. Got it, or.
Is that by state statute the amount? Or do we, had to, or do we have a range that we can.
I believe that's by state.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, you want to talk to the judges about that?
Yeah.
Why?
No.
Just, I think, I would assume it's up by statute. I, I, if I were to guess, it's, I would only. One hundred, I would ninety nine, forty nine percent.
That would state somewhere, I would, we would really never want it because it'd increase.
We would have been created. Uh, we would have been created, yeah, I agree. Now. The pension is funded one percentage by the officers and one percentage by the county. Listen to this one.
Hmm. The county is funding the pension at approximately thirty two percent for twenty twenty four. I mean, officers funded at six percent, if I correct.
What did you say?
Officers?
Yes.
It's. Mac is six.
It's me. It is Mac of six, so they're at three right now.
So they're at what?
Three percent.
Yeah, so we at three percent.
Okay, we pay thirty two. And then where, who pays the rest?
That's. And that's the percentage of their salary that it requires to cover the pension.
Now, what I would say though to that is, that's not abnormal for that to happen. I mean, I know at Valpo, city Valpo, officers pay about three percent too. You know, and the city picks that up. So I would say it's a great benefit, it's a nice thing for the off, for the employee, but. It's not something above and beyond that the county's doing, that other agencies aren't. That's not, that's happening around the state. I mean, that's, that's pretty set standards, three to six percent. So, but it's still, you know, it's a cost.
Well, they have some good investors too. You guys done really well with the returns. I don't know, recently.
No.
But I know I'm asking.
Page nine, vehicle inspections.
That money could only be used for vehicles. All right, you know.
For the lane checks? That's been checked.
Yeah.
That's been checked.
Yeah. They use for.
Training.
Be used for training. Company. I had to look at what we figured out there.
So is that somebody buys a car and say, bring down the sheriff's office, get a lane check.
Yeah.
Page ten, on the user fee, sure, continuing education.
Training.
Yeah.
Uh, salaries come out of there, right? Is that right? That's.
One title for you.
Yeah. That's kind of getting money deposited into it. You know, that is funded. No, those are.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I believe that that fund can be used for training.
This is about four dollars per ticket.
Uh, it is, is it two or is it?
Or whatever.
It's two dollars.
Right.
Yeah, and that's just solely, that's money we get back from the state for tickets that are issued, the fees or fines, comes back. I thought it was two. Is it, maybe it is four.
So when you guys write a ticket, I, I always, I realized I only get like two or twelve bucks out of this whole ticket, didn't I?
Back to the, well, back to the, back to the agency.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the goal, and we use for training.
Well. I don't think it's sound the right ticket.
Well, but you have to understand, it's not just the officers writing the tickets, you've got it out of the clerk's department there, collecting the money, you have the courts that also have to dress it for.
Alright, I was wrong, yeah, same.
Prosecutors, prosecutors, public defender.
That's right, prosecuted, public defender, yeah, it's not just writing a ticket. But then he has this.
No, that, that's what I mean, getting that even more.
It's, you are.
It's more costly, no, no, I think everybody. For four bucks to get.
Four bucks a big.
Yeah, I mean, you lose the money, right? Maybe it's still a stern one.
Yeah.
Pages eleven, twelve and thirteen are another user fee fund for the sheriff.
Yeah.
Page five oh five.
So this one pays salaries. I believe there's.
Did it say ticket one two or?
I don't know if it's kind of fine or Mary's. But curb comes out of there. The only thing that, really, yeah, it's payroll. The only thing that um, we don't, because it's only part of, it's a supplement, it's not a, one of our full salaries. Um, so there is no insurance that comes out of there, but. This is a supplement of my insurance.
Page fourteen, fifteen, drug task force.
That's exactly what it is. So.
Then back up real quick, the last one, where's the one generated from? You know, on that one thing? Okay, let's go to the.
That's the one that gets four. Different fine items, that all comes from Rachel.
Oh, what's those are, um, tax warrants, probably, maybe eviction fees, there's, there's a hundred dollar fee to have an officer stand by. Um, goes through that department.
Something with that.
I know, like.
What? The reported, yes, I, because we, no, that's right, do Indiana state tax warrants or bureau taxes, we send the letters out, we collect.
Um. The eviction fees, because, I feel like there's one other, um. Four is like.
Marriage disclosure. The sheriff's.
And person, sheriff's sales that goes in there, yeah.
Um. We let me out of the department for three months and I'm like, what did we do?
No, I don't, you're not.
I, yeah, I'm trying so hard to. Brought this stuff in faster than I can. So it's like, great, yeah.
Um, that's one page sixteen.
Well, we's getting the drug. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that is exactly. It's pacing that, we use it, we pay a full salary out of there, we do not pay medical benefits out of.
So I, is this drug task force, I'm sorry?
Yes. No, this is riverboat money goes in here to fund this. Some small leisure money goes in here to fund the. Um. You know. Prosecutor.
So it's can pay one salary.
It pays one salary and it pays for undercover supplies, it pays per diem for the drug unit officers. Uh, they buy testing strips for different kinds of narcotics. And.
Uh, criminal machine.
Yeah. Right, uh, we just purchased a, a small drone for the drug unit to do some.
Survey. It's like a short bit of my house. Oh no, that's the big helicopter.
That's Lake County. Um, and then we have been um. Using some of that money in conjunction with some of the money from the riverboat to purchase vehicles. So there is some money that comes back into this that we charge HIDA because they will pay us a lease fee every month. For vehicles that we purchase, so we put out the money in advance, kind of. And HIDA is reimbursing us five hundred dollars a month that goes back into this fund.
It's a way of building it.
We're trying, we're trying because vehicles are so expensive now and, and the drug unit guys can only have a vehicle for so long.
Yeah.
Before.
The apartment.
Yeah. No way you're driving.
The bad guys keep traffic with the drug guys are behind driving.
Well, you got a department that says, we'll give you a car and then give you a Ford Explorer with a spotlight on.
Yeah, it looks like. I've been looking.
Reverse I howled you.
Seventy nine. Yeah, 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 you guys don't want to drive a little Volkswagen Beetle from nineteen sixty eight, so.
Page sixteen seventeen, air donation.
That's exactly what it sounds like. We get donations for various things and. We internally keep the money separated, some of it, I know Project Lifesaver has over ten thousand dollars in there right now. K nine has. Several thousand dollars in there right now. Sheriff's camp has several thousand dollars in there right now and then we pay for the things. Project Lifesaver, they make new bands every couple of months and um, the K nine unit supply. Owns and training and things like that, we pay for out of that fund. Thank you.
Say, say travel.
Hi, Jersey, yes, thanks.
We can FaceTime. Not while you're driving, no, that'd be against law.
Thanks, sir.
Go forward.
Yeah, right.
Um, page eighteen, the overweight vehicle.
Yep, and same thing, we bought a new vehicle out of that fund a couple of years ago, so it had been winded down and now we're trying to build that back up. It's, it's taken a lot longer than it used to, um, but I think we, we did get some pretty decent. Deposits in there.
Yeah, better, yeah.
So you work very closely, the sheriff worked very closely with the guys to work on this specialty and.
With the whole.
Judge.
Well, yeah, with uh, and, and the county highway, you know, it's important, we know where the detours are off highways on the county roads. So this year alone, they really stepped up that overweight vehicle enforcement. Uh, because of all the road constructions down the state highways and. It diverts it onto the county roads and then the county, the state reimburses the counties for repairs, but uh, uh, it's been a real challenge this year for sure.
I'm not wrong, twenty two, we brought in some pretty good money, twenty three drops substantial.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, you know, this year hopefully, well, you know, we'll see where, where it all comes in, but I know that.
When you can.
They were, they were.
A roll that was four hundred eighty dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But we, we have guys who their truck is outfitted specially for this.
Do I owe leave due?
No, 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 they're, they're assigned crews, there's two of them. They're assigned crews and uh, but we, we will pay them, you know, overtime too. Because of their on midnights or straight days and they're in zone, they're in zones. Uh, sometimes we've had them come out on overtime detail, uh, and focus solely on the, the uh, having.
Just your overtime for now, this budget.
Um. No.
It can, yeah.
It's earmarked for that, yeah.
Currently it's coming out of the general fund, yeah. It's, it's not a. It's not a time, but we can certainly separate it out, just literally.
We'd have him quite a couple hours uh, for the sheriff or, you know, it's not, they're spending eight hours on it. So.
Page is nineteen through twenty two, police safety data.
So fun. So this, this fund can kind of be used for a lot of things. We've used it to pay for slots. We pay for office supplies, we pay for our phones, we pay for.
I don't know, you know what, I think I always pulled Lewis Block again.
That's the appearance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think I asked that once before.
Yeah.
What do they call it, that?
There's an abbreviation for it, I don't know.
Um, it pays the supplemental salary for Mary's position. Um. It pays for the phone service or interpretation or inmates. We pay some maintenance out of there for some equipment in jail. This money comes from. Inmate phone. We get.
Inmates what?
Phone, phone usage, tablet usage.
There, when you get the call, do you accept these?
Yeah, right, yeah.
I've never.
I also say yes when I'm calling.
I, I've never been on that side of it. So I don't know exactly how much it costs.
And there are changes coming to how much money the fund.
Yeah.
Bring you in.
Yeah.
They have been warning us for several.
Yeah, that way.
Bad way.
Bad way.
Nothing that, why are they doing that?
The feds are.
Can't charge an inmate that much money to use the phone.
Yeah.
Well. So a lot of the money, I see not a lot of the money, but there are more than a few uh, go to the commissary. Reimbursement for things that we have paid for out of the commissary and there are, um, and I would have to look at the details to be able to. I don't need details, yeah, just for.
When that's supposed to be coming down, but you know, if something else just tell you.
They're, they're talking about next year is when the. Um, federal government would make the rule and then it probably wouldn't hit until the end of next.
The National Sheriff's Association is heavily involved in, in those conversations about with the feds on. Uh, what that rate is gonna be, so nothing's been said, decided yet.
What is the rate this year? Exactly, I mean, I, again, I don't care what, I mean, I would have music for a gen, once a week.
I thought it was like, right, I thought it was like five dollars.
Uh, she, she thought five dollars.
That's charged too, though.
Yeah.
But.
Well.
Don't go anywhere.
That's what I was gonna say. Don't be a bad guy.
Don't be a bad guy, you're not charging for video damage.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Page twenty three, video tape.
So whenever there is an accident. An attorney's office or an individual comes in and they want photos or video, we have two separate funds for those things. They can be, those, both of those funds, so it's forty nine oh eight and forty nine ten. Can be used for training and education and for anything related to photos and videos, so we purchase. I mean, cameras. Some different lenses and things like that. We bought a couple of years ago some software.
Yeah, fitting equipment.
Yeah.
Equipment for body cameras, that kind of stuff.
And now this is funded.
Through, you have to pay if you have an accident and you're going to court. Your attorney would send us a hundred and fifty dollars for the body camera of the officer or seventy five dollars for any photos that we have until. Thank you, Lord. You have to, definitely.
Hey, there are a whole lot of lawyers.
Wait, you can see it's all.
All.
Now.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, page. Twenty five, inmate processing fees.
So this covers the, well, the money comes from, that's what it says, inmate processing. It's a seventy five dollars sign down.
Is that by state statute?
Yep. Um. Well, there's like ordinance in the county also. But it's directed by state statute, right? Yeah, okay. So that's where the money is generated from and then we spend that money, it pays the supplement of the salary for our caseworkers for the jail. But that is gonna change.
They can only keep the money of the individuals guilty.
I don't think they send it to us until the case has been quit, because I used to process those checks from the clerk's office.
Exactly, so initially they have to pay it when they go in, but if they're found not guilty, they get a reimbursement.
I thought you were saying that's gotta come out.
There used to be a time, but they kept it all and then.
What's my journal?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if it's probable cause for arrest, then you should give that seventy five bucks back.
Yeah, I think that's a. Right, what salary?
Uh, our caseworkers in the jail, but that is gonna go away for twenty twenty five because the Department of Corrections has completely funded our salaries for twenty twenty five. With substantial increases because they did not get increases with the wage study. So.
Wait, you're talking about social workers?
They're caseworkers for our inmates, yes.
How many cases?
So, no, the social workers that we have are outside the jail, that's Sam and.
They're outside the jail.
Yeah, but I mean, they still go inside, what's that?
And then you've got your school.
You're, yeah, what we have inside are um. You're, yeah, what we have inside are um case managers, case, like, they're not quite social workers. They go in there and they teach C D A and they teach different classes, but they're not the actual social workers that you're thinking of. The social workers that we have, they, caseworkers only deal with inmates. Our social workers are working with our case managers on the inside of the jail.
How did the caseworkers miss out on not getting a wage study increase?
One of them was only part-time, so she wasn't. In the wage study, and they, so then she just.
Right.
There was nowhere to bring her up to.
Right.
And then the other one, I don't remember what happened with Rachel. It it wasn't on there. I I don't know.
Position before, did she move from one position to another?
Carrie was part-time girl, and she waits to full-time during the wage study during all of that, so.
So they have just, how many?
There's two positions, but they're not gonna come out of this fund this next year. So they're completely gonna be covered by the grant from the Department of Corrections.
Is that including all that, that's also?
It is pretty close.
Are you serious? And not yours, just just those youthfully challenged individuals. That would just be two plus.
Um yes, they are completely funded by the Department of Corrections grant with substantial rates, okay? So that's on the one forty-four.
Page twenty-eight, school resource officer.
So that money comes, previously it had come from three schools, now it's only coming from two schools. So it is Dunland and Porter. Who's the school that dropped out? Boom Grove.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, they hired a full-time, uh so they hired a retiring D N R officer. So originally, last year, they hired Jeremy Chavez, retired from Porter County. Went into Boom Grove as a full-time school safety officer, okay? But I kept him, I gave him special deputy, uh deputization. So if there's powers, if there was an active shooter situation, something where he had a police action, he was protected. Boom Grove likes it like that so much, what they did is they hired a second school safety officer, who's a retiring D N R, Nicole Ballman. And she's gonna, uh so Jeremy's in one building, Nicole's gonna be in another building, and then they're still gonna pay part-time officers, part-time officers to work security in the third building. So.
So how many? How many debities are we paying?
Two, two, one in one of these Porter County schools, and then one in Dunland School System that covers Liberty and Jackson County.
And we're getting, they're getting paid back.
Yeah, we paid, yeah, they paid the, yeah, they paid it, they paid the full. Until.
Including benefits and, yeah.
You guys are covering for what, the twelve weeks? Page twenty-nine, sheriff overtime.
That money is just, Ryan and I work, so it's overtime that we get reimbursed from different agencies. HIDA and D E A reimburse us, and then we reimburse the general fund for.
Can I ask a question, this here, you might, you might not even know, you might, City of Crown Point's on here a bunch of times, why do they reimburse us?
City of Crown Point is HIDA.
Oh, that's HIDA, okay.
That's where they're.
And then you give us, we reimburse the general fund, because you take it out of here?
No.
Not for that, I mean. But we do use the overtime. Well.
Yeah, this, this, yeah, you know, this, this, this specific one, we get reimbursed on all of our. Page thirty, scat room.
Well, you'll be asked that again.
So I should find out. Why, what'd you say, sheriff? State criminal?
It says, if this is what I'm looking at, yep, state cr- state criminal.
My, my guess is, is this was a previous used grant at some point, and this money is probably just sitting there.
If there's any reason why we can't use the money, just find out if this grant's even still going and just get rid of some of these funds.
Probably needs to be reimbursed to the.
Well, there's, yeah, with grants, you have to look up those kinds of things. Um but no, there's a lot of those funds, yeah, that, like, being David.
What do you use it for?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars is.
But still, we would have to reimburse it to the, where we got the grants here.
Right.
Oh, so you just can't take the money and use it for something?
With most things, if they were county-based funds, yes, if they're grants, you have to check to see if the money, A, we have to either use it for what the grant said, or we have to give it back. Page thirty-one, sheriff D E A proceeds.
This is all seizure and forfeiture money. And we use that, like, we took a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars out of the, well, we gave it back to the general fund in June. And we did a reduction in the general fund, and because we had asked you guys to pay for the body cameras, right, utility of body cameras. And we paid for those out of this, because we, we knew we were coming over, coming after different things out of the general fund. So we were trying to pay for things that we could out of our seizure money.
So this balance is.
What can that be used for?
Uh various things, they cannot be used for salaries. Not used for overtime, if we have, is for benefits. But it can be for, pretty much used for anything else to benefit the sheriff's department and share.
Yeah, that on, yeah, but, well, no, this is where I'm gonna buy, I wanna buy the bomb truck, the bomb unit, the bomb truck. No, what, what you guys paid for, um, I asked, yeah, what, well, was the SWAT vehicle? You guys, that was in twenty-two, is where you guys had committed those one, was it twenty-two?
That was a Ford six hundred or six fifty?
No, that, well, that was. This is, this is to replace the bomb truck that is twenty-two years old. It was bought and then put an aftermarket full-drive system on it. It's, it's completely unsafe, and the bomb unit last year was dispatched, was called out thirty-seven times, and.
Isn't that one you had problems with, though, it's on the road, the brakes or something?
Yeah, so, uh, this haul, this hauls the, uh, this hauls the million-dollar robot around. And, uh, you know, I think it's, I don't know. You know, and this is one of the ones where, matter of fact, uh, they just, we just hosted, us and the Mac hosted a, uh, the bomb international bomb training this week, but I didn't know, and I just found this is interesting, how the entire United States, our bombing is only one of four hundred and fifty bomb units across the country. Which, four hundred and fifty sounds like a lot, when you have tons of thousands of police agencies. Um and we're, and somebody like an agency can't just, like, Port County can't just call and say, I wanna do a bomb unit. You know, it takes federal authorization and training to do that, so the amount of training these guys go to is unreal, and so I know that this vehicle is something that, you know, and I understand to try to help the general fund out, we've looked for grants for bomb trucks, there's no grants out there, we could, we could actually ask the federal government for a, uh, you know, just a surplus vehicle, but you don't know what you're getting, and you can't, you're really limited on what you could do, so we thought, well, let's take advantage of, of, of what we can use this money for, and we don't have to come to you guys, like, you guys already bought the Bearcat.
Money is the cost for.
About four fifty?
Four hundred and fifty thou.
Are we the only?
Yeah, we're, well, we're the only, there's. Yeah, we go to seven counties, we go to seven counties, there's only nine bombing units in the state.
Fifty states, four fifty, about nine, ten states.
Do you, uh, get reimbursed?
This is, this is all mutual aid, so like, for example, and and I, and the two top counties out of the seven that get called out is Porter County and Lake County, all right, and Lake County, you know, they have the helicopter that we use on a regular basis, so you know, we got a bomb unit, they got the helicopter, right, we might go to Jasper County once or twice. Um but, or these other Newton counties start, uh but primarily, it's, it's LaPorte County. And LaPorte County, you know, we need their marine yet, they'll come over for us, Lake County, you know, so there's a, there's a, there's a mutual aid amongst the big three. So, uh, yeah, so.
So you're planning on getting this, uh.
Next year, yeah, I'm gonna come and guys, and, uh, yeah, and this way, this doesn't impact the general fund at all.
Okay, would like to go over some of the budgets now, not on plan, I just chose the one that had personnel. I didn't go through, these, we went through these, it gave detail of what could it be used for, I thought it'd be hard advantage, so I'll go over. So what percentage, or what were you looking at in reference to, um, the, uh, an increase? Cause I see most years, did you go with a percentage, or did you, how did you work yours out?
Three point five. Three point five percent, across board, with the exception of the general funds, which would be asked for additional personnel.
Where is it, how many additional personnel?
For sheriff's department, it was three, and for the jail, it was three. Full-time officers, and we asked to move some things around, we wanted.
Sheriff three and jail one, I'm sorry. How many did you get last year?
We just got the cops grant, which we still have not filled. We're not using that.
So you haven't used it?
No.
I'm looking at the rest of your numbers, so you're pretty much in line, except merit pay, of course, if you add additional individuals.
Merit pay, we actually are trying to increase their merit pay. So it's adding individuals and increasing the dollar amount per officer.
Be in the next page.
Yeah, right, but I'm trying to absorb. They're getting, uh, she's got, this is what they got.
Is that three point five, merit pay?
Yeah.
That's pension base, right, is that pension based with sheriff?
Who was they, the pension?
No, how they base pension?
It's not based on merit pay, it does base, oh. Well, that's overtime is up to five thousand, but I think their merit pay is considered part of their salary. And so it does go towards their pension, you are correct.
Look like you have a question.
No, I'm just absorbing what I'm hearing, or trying to. I didn't like your, what all.
We're talking about the merit pay and, um, what's included in it, how they calculate it.
These issue, the pure salary based, anything percentage on the prosecutor?
Is it equal to prosecutor?
Pardon, is it equal to?
No, I think it's.
It's plus, it's the prosecutors plus five thousand.
So it was three and a half percent?
Does not make sense.
The one eighty-five, is that the, the statutory increase?
Correct.
Even if we took all of them like this would say.
Right.
Even if we took all the raises away.
So then when you're looking, um, some of them stay the same, you've got your hourly to reduce by a eleven, I'm, or thirty, hundred thirty-four dollars. Or pretty much the same, per diem went up by five thousand, we went six thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, and that's a, that's a federal statute. Correct, that is just the K nine officers. My big question to you. Cause you love my question. Okay, so we were told that overtime would be reduced substantially, and I know normally you put it on out in, but then you come back every other month or more. So due to the fact that you went that twelve-hour shift, is this going to be the forty thousand? Is that gonna be the top, or are you gonna be expecting more overtime after that? Cause you told us that.
I'm trying to follow what you just asked.
Well, you had stated that at the beginning of next year, we would know um how affected it, and it's with the overtime was reduced substantially, and that's what that's told. So.
Short shift overtime would be reduced, it's planned, short shift overtime is, you know, different than paying officers overtime for training, SWAT, um, short shift overtime is going to be reduced, right? That's, that's the difference, what's that?
What is short shift?
Short shifts, because we have minimum manpower, so by adding, going to twelve-hour shifts and added two additional officers per shift, okay? And, but the problem that we're facing right now is that we have two people on night duty, we have five that are in training, right? So that's why we're having these short shifts, okay? Because of the amount unplanned, people being on, on night duty, being on, being pregnant, hurt, things like that. So the goal for these twelve-hour shifts is a couple things. You put more manpower on a shift, so you can increase your manpower or staffing. And then number two, it reduces short shifts, okay? That's, that's where the benefit of the twelve hours will come in, is that we're gonna reduce that. And we're not gonna have a reduction in overtime that we pay people for mandated training for SWAT. You know, they can't train, you know, while on duty, so we have to pay them overtime to, to train, so, so that's, that's where that's coming.
Is that certain special training, because I know Val, right, so what they do is they have a training day, and they may only train for seven hours, but they get paid for twelve.
Yeah, okay, totally different, that's for the mandated, that's for their training days, they have twelve hour, so you got.
For like ceiling, e-cure.
Well, that, yeah, yes, yes, so that's for your domestic violence, for your felony traffic stops, for your defensive tactics. Then what we won't see a reduction is all the specialty training, right? So that's where we're not, but we do anticipate seeing a substantial reduction in the short shift overtime.
So have you figured out how many, um, classes, classes are necessary, and what it might cost in overtime for that? For your training? But you have an idea of what type of training, you've got your SWAT team, you've got your bomb, you've got those other ones that and you have so many hours that they have to have and where they have to go, do you have an idea overall what it may cost for that training for, or for that overtime for training there? And you can't, if you didn't, you won't be able to figure it out now, but something you'll have to work on.
And that's, that's something that we have a training coordinator that I could work with him on to try and get a number like that. Because not all of that training is done on overtime, and you try and trade shifts to do it at the workday and things like that. Um but I did look at this year versus last year, and our overtime difference to pay period date not including this pay period, um, is only eight thousand dollars more than it was last year, and being that we're short seven officers.
But you went to the twelve-hour shifts December of last year, and you're talking about eight months of the twelve-hour shifts.
Right.
So we were short five officers, though. But I guess when you're looking at it from that standpoint, I understand being short, but if you're an eight thousand dollar difference, it's like you haven't really made, made that much of a difference.
Well, okay, but we also put more staffing on the road as well, okay? And that's something that we're trying to improve upon as well, right? And because. And because clearly we're understaffed, um we're not, we're not understaffed because we can't fill the openings, you know? Um but we just have a lot of turnover, right, you know, over a lot, a lot of retirements. Fortunately, we haven't lost a lot of officers to go to other agencies, which is something that we really wanted to stop. But uh you know, again, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of, in my opinion, yeah. Right now, okay, if we are at this point, eight thousand dollars over, but if you, if you add that, if you factor in the fact that we have five people. Not working, right? That's only eight thousand dollars for people, for five people that aren't working, right? Um so I think we are, you know, whereas I think we're saving money, so I still think we're saving money.
So you're thinking that the fifty percent increase in time off didn't affect it at all? So it's just a concern, because it's, it's like, you know, we've been going, it's like. Oh, you're not at four nine-one-one in this, they're at two hundred thousand, or they're usually about two hundred thousand here, and I think you're like one seventy-five, one eighty. We are approximately. Around that time, because I know you're less than.
I don't, I don't know if we're going to hit.
Well, that, that's why I asked the question, because we, we had talked and you said, we'll know more by March, and we really didn't talk about it.
No, and I think all because we just got to slow this, 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 these magnancies that keep popping up.
I'll tell you, um not that I didn't trust you, but you know, I talk to everybody. So by my red banner is always at Chester's top there, he kind of, before he gets off, they were, they were twelve. I didn't know that, so I was going, I say, I got a couple of questions, and I've seen him around a lot, young kid, good, good-looking young kid. I say, I got a question, do you guys work eights or twelves? Oh, twelve, twelve. So really, so how do you like, he goes, I would never go to an apartment that works. Whatever, eights. He goes, you can plan your life, you can plan your schedule, it's a better, he goes, I would never live in another apartment unless they, unless they were twelve. And he kind of explained to me like vacations, different things on, you know, that. So I don't know the benefits, but when you said recruitment, I thought to myself, well, this was just like I said a month ago. I, I, I asked him, because I was just curious, just to see what other departments were doing. And um it, it. If you guys were aides, I, he wouldn't go to the sheriff's.
We just did a survey, um just to see, okay, we've done it for almost a year, how do you guys feel? Go back.
Oh, you know they don't want to.
What's that?
You know they don't, they've got a family, they can, they can do things now.
Yeah, and they uh only three out of the entire patrol division said, yeah, let's go back. You know, um but those are also probably individuals saying, really had like a. And I don't know the absolute reasons, but uh what I can tell you is that there were less people that want to go back than less people. They even want to try last year, right? And so, and we experienced that about, well, I remember that. Um almost no one wanted to do it. Then we did it for a year, did the survey, and I think there were like three or four that said, no, I want to go back, but everybody else was like, I want to keep it. Those were the tendents, they had Monday through Friday off, pardon me, um only worked Monday through Friday, had every single weekend off. So there's definitely a morale uh incentive there.
Well, I was just thinking about it as a, you know, when you said recruitment, I thought to myself, well, this is a young man in Chester. Um if we were ever five, six, seven thousand dollars more, if he ever wanted to, it's like a lateral transfer. He would, he wouldn't lateral transfer you, because.
That monster advertisement today. You know, where they eighty-one thousand and, but you know, they uh lateral first class and uh. One of the things they advertised was twelve-hour shifts.
Not that I thought it was BS, because obviously I've never worked twelve hours. We, we usually work eight, ten, and twelve hours for us is, is death money, because it's, we have to work nine or six days a week.
So what uh what did it actually cost? There was this uh rumor where it was costing us like a unreasonable amount of money.
Well, what it is, what it is, is they gave them additional time off. And when you have additional time off, you then have to look at who's going to cover those, because they're talking about being short. And we figured.
What caused the shortage?
No, no, what happened, no.
I'm sorry.
No, and I, and I understand where, where Karen came up with the numbers, when you, when you look at it from a numbers perspective. Um but by also adding additional staffing onto that shift, that also makes up, because with twelve-hour shifts, you may. You, you may have more days off, but you actually work more hours in a year. Okay, and by adding two more, two more, no. Are we going over this again? But regardless, here's the thing, is by, by building the manpower. By building the manpower, it also makes, makes up by having more time off for everyone else. So it averages out, it really does. And uh I, I just feel like.
So I feel like we're doing a lot for, for your department. Do you feel that way?
Well, I definitely feel supported by the council. I, yeah, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, don't ask us next year.
Don't ask us next year, but yeah. Look, I, I told you that last week, you know, I said, you know, I've always, I, I think this, the council has, has. Been very supportive with the sheriff's office, and I think that you guys do what you can for the money that you have. But you know, again, but that falls back to the conversations of last week's meeting, you know, I mean, is it everything we absolutely need? No. But do you guys give us what you can? Yes. You know, and I, and I think that you guys support us in what we want to do, because of the transparency and the conversations that we have. And you know, I think when I come to you guys and lay out this, you know, this is why we're doing it, this is what I want to do. I think uh you guys have always been very good to us.
Now, I have one more question. You're wanting, how many jail officers are you short now?
Okay, so, okay, so when you start doing these staffing studies, right? Um I had the Indiana Sheriff's Association, their jail division expert come in and do a breakdown of. Uh staffing needs within the jail, okay? That takes into consideration of every jail officer and what they do, right? And look, in a perfect world, I think you have a perfect world number, and then I think you have a reality-based number, right? And in a perfect world number, the ISA said that we are short twelve jail officers, okay? Do I think we need twelve jail officers? I don't know, but do I think we need five, six? Yes, I do, for what we want to accomplish, yeah. Um so I'm not asking for twelve jail officers, right? Uh the same thing with the patrol officers, you know, and if you go by FBI statistics, which that can be argued. If you go by different numbers, it says that, and I even, I even hate to put it out there, but it says the numbers that have been thrown out is a hundred. Police officers in addition to what we have. Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's what I'm saying is, no, there's a factor, and I know that it's. That's right, I know it's been brought up, I know it's been brought up, well, does the crime rate substantiate? The officers, a hundred officers. You don't want to base it on crime, right, all the time. You want to base it on your territory, your distance. The number of officers, the number of calls, because as the population grows, you may not have a explosion in crime and murders. But you're going to have an explosion in traffic accidents, you're going to have an explosion in, 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 unsafe roads, right? So what I'm saying is, do I, I would love that over the next couple of years, to grow the jail by five or six jail officers. And I would like to grow the patrol division by. I don't know, eight to ten officers, right? And, and then see how it goes, because if I can increase the patrol officers, then I can take the county, instead of the zones that we have. Reconfigure the zones, so you have more of a condensed area that the officers can actually, and I can throw more man, or staffing into those zones. So that's, I guess that's my long expl- explanation, so I don't think we need.
My, my question though, I, I just wanted to know, how many? How many empty jail people do you have now? If you could go out and hire them right now, are you fully staffed?
Well, right now, so we just did more jail interviews, okay, today, here yesterday, they had jail interviews. Because in over the last three weeks, we've had some openings created that were unexpected. We had two officers, I mean, two jail officers get hired. By uh police departments. We had uh one uh jail officer that was terminated. We had one jail, or one officer that had the emergency uh neck surgery, right? So we've had, we have openings that have. But we have bodies that we will be able to fill them with. We just have to get them trained, and so.
As of yesterday, we had four openings, two on medical leave, two in training, one on paternity leave, one on maternity. That's why we were emergency put on the council meeting on Tuesday, because we had not anticipated all of that.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not having, fortunately for us, we're not having a problem filling the vacancies when they come up. It's anticipating the vacancies, you know, and you know, I was proud to say that uh last year, mid-last year. The jail was able to really focus on recruitment. And we were actually had hiring lists where we didn't have that for, so. And now we're, and you know, we're going to go through a hiring process for the road right now, because we have some openings from a couple of retirements. And um you know.
Which separates about who from the jail.
But I'll tell you what, but I'll tell you what, one thing that I'm proud of, I just did a study for the Indiana Sheriff's Association. Sixty-eight percent, almost seventy percent of our road officers came from the jail. So I think that's a great recruitment and feeder system for our county, so. Alright, I'm off my soapbox.
I want to commend you though, on the fact that you've kept, my point was about the overtime keeping it down. Because when you're talking, you know, you're eight thousand over, but you're saying by the end of the year, you don't think, because. Those other four, they think in the academy, they're on the road now, they, they graduate in September?
Uh well, yeah, we have two, we have three in the academy right now. And we have re entraining, or two in trainings, they're going to be released, release the solo duty here in the next.
So that'll help you substantiate and take care of. Which means that you're looking and it's working, we're, yeah. And that was my point.
We're also looking at our compings. We're trying to make sure that we keep that under control. We're, we're trying really hard to keep that under control and so, I mean. And the uh patrol commander and the sheriff are. How many are left?
And what we're trying to also do too, is what we're also hoping, Karen, I don't know if I'm talking about this. Is we're looking at different ways to reduce the overtime, so we're always looking, that's a big thing. For, for me and for, for Kathy, is, you know, we're always constantly, how can we, so one thing that we're going to try is. Instead of when we do have the short shifts, okay, instead of working twelves. Come out during the busy times of the eight, thirty hours, right?
Well, that's, that's me, because in all actuality, and I'm money that you spend on overtime, time, time and a half could give you another percent.
The one thing I want to say that I saw something interesting um with manpower. And just being on a council for a year and a half, I always thought that, say, ten years ago, you had forty officers, now we got fifty-eight. But I, I thought that was so interesting, I think we need to bring that to the council. I don't know where I saw that from, I think maybe you might have gave it to me or shared, shared with me. I think in ten years. We, we, we start, we were at like fifty-four, fifty-five, and then rolling up to like say fifty-eight. I mean, it's not, it's been a pretty constant.
Yeah, we haven't grown.
We haven't grown, and I'm not saying it's like, oh my god, we should grow, but I think it's, there's definitely a case to say, yeah, we could use some more officers. I mean, over ten years, you just, people I think is automatically with people in training, they come out and say, man, how many do we have?
There's a constant rotation.
I, I just didn't realize that over that span of years, there really wasn't, you're kind of stagnant.
There hasn't been a growth.
There hasn't been a growth at all.
In two thousand and fourteen, we had sixty-five officers, and today we have seven. And three of them, as of this, when I did that, three of them were school resource officers, and one of them was in the drug.
Thinking of, I'm going to give these to you, this is the report for your vehicles and what the insurance cost, okay?
I have a question on this, this is why I, I was looking through this real quick, and the insurance cost. Isn't there a way to have like a blanket, like a, like say, hey, look, I want to ensure all this is one unit, as a fleet cost? And they'll charge like hundred fifty thousand dollars, because when you play the odds on all these cars, if you're an insurance company. Instead of being charged per car, they may, they may say, hey, you know what, pay us a hundred thousand, we'll, we'll insure all these cars.
Melanie works with that. I don't, we go back to the commissioner, but I think we've had like three or four. Vehicles, vehicles that were.
Which are actually doing not really well.
Indiana interns. I had my question, because when I'm looking, it looks like, and this will be crap, to take care of Bearcat or any of those. Or any trailers or things like that, but the sheriff's, you said you had seventy officers, and I know we've got like people from the jail that use cars. But it says that you've got a hundred and eleven associated with your department. So I'm, I'm asking you guys to go through that and make sure that's fact, okay? Because it just caught me off guard when I started looking at the numbers, I had about a hundred and eleven. Don't get me wrong, I've seen a lot of those idols, but you know.
Is that from that gentleman we worked with last year?
This is the cop commissioner's report. This is from Melanie. And this is what we have insurance on.
So we might be paying for cars that we don't even have.
Well, that's my point.
Or like, if you give one to the, you see, they should pay.
Besides the additional people, um all of the other um departments that they have and raises. Um I think they went through why they couldn't use some of those other funds.
Right, that was very helpful.
What's their total ask?
One point two from the general fund?
One point two, and the one point five.
And that, and that's, that's what, three point five percent raises, and the.
The additional. I thought the one point two, I was giving you the benefit of the doubt.
I, I think that's my, I think uh Congressman Rivas just sat off, he was like, what? There goes that budget. Because I, he likes to say that.
Yeah, the whole, and that's just from the sheriff's department. And I can see where he'd say that, because usually we're at about one point nine for, you know, for a yearly, you know, fund.
I know, I, I usually do.
Discuss, it's the um, the jail, we were trying to get those. That intern program. It is through, I mean, time, yep, and it's out of the federal inmate money, so we're still waiting for um information that ninety-six oh one.
So it's not a general fund ask?
The federal inmate money is. Has been considered a general fund and not considered a general fund. There's an ordinance that says the sheriff is the one that gets to dictate how it gets spent. And then there's, so, I don't know, you tell me, Karen. But that's where the nice thing, we're asking for one point five, that includes the seven hundred thousand dollars out of that fund. Okay, so I, we have four funds that are general funds. The sheriff, the jail, the garage, and then the federal inmate money. Whether or not that federal inmate money is considered a general fund depends on the administration.
Well, I think primarily initially, it was due to the fact that we cover all the costs with reference to personnel, the food and all of those other things. It was considered money that should be going back to the general fund.
Right, but it is money that is generated in the jail. And by ordinance, it is said that the sheriff is the one who dictates how that money is spent. So we do not spend more money than that brings in. Next year, we are estimated to bring in one point five million dollars.
For the general, for the.
For the federal inmate money. So even though we asked for seven hundred thousand dollars in that fund, we're still staying right at what we bring in. And.
What's that fund used for? What's the fund used for, federal inmate fund?
We pay salaries, we pay hourly overtime, we pay some medical benefits, but a grant doesn't. We pay salaries, we pay hourly overtime, we pay some medical benefits that a grant doesn't cover. Uh we pay pension, and that was one of the big asks, it went from one seventy to three fifty-three out of that fund. Uh uniforms and clothing, food and groceries, that also went up substantially, ammunition. Uh we added to it this year to try and keep away from the garage general fund, we needed more money for tires and tubes and parts and supplies. Uh training and education is in there, we pay for inmates' hospital and medical bills, we pay for men uh. Maintenance agreement, we pay for some uh motor vehicles, that's part of the ordinance, is that the sheriff's department would pay for the motor vehicles. So that commissioners would no longer have to. Good evening, Phil, do you got?
Bye.
Bye bye.
Carefully, did you need this, use notes here?
Um, yeah, he would take them off.
And then the last one was a new body scanner for the jail. That's all out of the, so if you take our one point five million dollars, like Karen said, you take away that additional seven hundred out of this, we're only at. Eight hundred so. Only, I'm one friend, after I said it, I've realized.
That's a three point five percent rate.
And six.
Because. I think we were looking at, or like if you look at all of employees, if you give a three percent raise, they weren't one point five normally.
Right.
Like, I mean, one percent so of that money for us, right?
Right. So, but that Ivy Tech program is, would hugely help the jail.
It would be. Could you have a a synopsis and get a breakdown and more information? So that it's something that we can read outside of the, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we have to tailor it together last year, so I'll look at copies of that from him, and you want me to email it to you guys, or?
Sure.
Okay, you guys also.
And if anybody, well, I'm thinking of it too, if anybody did get hired away for another department, let me know, because I've looked into. That state uh law that changed, that said we might be able to reimburse the attorney costs by the hiring department. So that you guys aren't completely out of the money that you guys have trained these people.
And now we have the contract that we include with new hires, where they are responsible.
For, I don't know if it's, I know it's for sheriffs.
We've only have one guy.
But we, I want to try, I want to pilot that and see what the whole process is like, so that we can.
He tried not to.
Yeah, he tried not to.
We can get a contractually on it, but I want to say for a low two. But there was a law, state change.
Last day. Said within ninety days, I am not his friend anymore, I think. I think it works out.
Why, thank you for being here, and you gave us a lot of information, I think that covers up some of the funny fun, what they're used for. And then I just need to meet with Mike and Red, and um you can.
Yeah, those, these sessions helped me, I mean, they really do. To understand what some of the stuff, they're, you know, where it comes from and. Thank you very much.
Thank you.